I now call to order the reorganization meeting of the Wallingford-Swathmore School District Board of School Directors. As the Board Secretary is unable to be present this evening, and there is no Assistant Board Secretary at this time, it is necessary for the holdover members of the Board to elect a temporary secretary to seat the newly elected and reelected Board members. Before doing so, I would like to proceed with taking a roll call of the holdover school board directors. Mr. Cutus?
Present.
And I am obviously present. All holdover Board Directors are present. At this time, may I have a motion for the election of a temporary Board Secretary? Are there any nominations for the Board Secretary temporarily?
I would like to nominate Jennifer Lins.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there is only one single nomination for temporary secretary, I will close the nominations now, and as they are now closed, and I am the only candidate nominated, I move the election of myself to temporary Board Secretary by acclamation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I hereby declare that I, Jennifer Lins, will as the elected temporary Board Secretary. At this time, as you are willing and able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It should be duly noted, the written notice of this reorganization meeting was mailed to each school board director on November 24th of 2021, and it read, "Please be advised that the Wallingford-Swathmore Board of School Directors will hold their reorganization meeting on Monday, December 6th of 2021 at 7:00 PM in the Strathhaven Middle School Library. At that time, the Board will elect its officers through December of 2022 and seat newly elected Board members." At this time, we turn to the audience for any response to items for action on tonight's agenda. Are there any comments from the public for items that are on tonight's agenda? If you will, please go to the podium and state your name, and without your number, you may state your street address. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Bill Foster in Strathhaven in Swathmore. So before you agree to become a school director, I want to speak about how being a school director matters. The Pennsylvania School Code gives you authority over our children's education. And we all know law can be confusing and complex, mostly because the world is. But amidst all the goings on in the law, there's often a simple idea about the how and why decisions, as in family law, what's in the best interest of the child? In the PA School Code, the simple idea, if you read it over, is that a community has children to educate, so the community gets to decide about that education. We will decide all of this through you, should you agree to be sworn in. You will legally control what exactly is available for our children. The teachers and administrators they will have, the buildings, books, open spaces, and extracurricular activities, the advanced courses in high school that will be offered, and the budget. All of this control shows up in your meetings. Matters like those tonight don't appear on your agenda out of courtesy. They're there by law. Your vote for President and reorganization and subcommittees and other things are yours, and they matter. You're not a rubber stamp. You may think, oh, we don't really have control. Harrisburg sets everything. They tell us exactly what to teach, et cetera. As with reorganization, you have freedom, even with what is taught. The Commonwealth sets educational standards, but you can decide exactly how to meet those standards, or whether you may want to exceed them. There may be a standard about multiplication to meet, but it's open-ended on exactly how. You might do some in a foreign language. You can require that the work bring in other learning on climate change, or pandemics, or income inequality. You could decide that in future teacher hiring, that you would put an emphasis on them being multilingual. You could decide that by the time children graduate, they should know how to read a drug label. You will have sweeping powers, and the biggest superpower you will have is deciding, do you want to understand the powers you have? You actually, and as a school director, do you want to actively bring your life experience and community connections to your work? Or do you wish to feel safe and comfortable to sit back passively and vote on what is put to you by someone else? As a rule, school employees and parents are cautious, reticent. Their jobs and children are at stake, so if you are not brave here in this room, if you don't lead and invite others to be brave and speak their mind experiences, then neither your experiences nor theirs will make a difference. It's up to you. You will have the power. Thanks.
Mr. Foster, thank you for your thoughtful comments on this very special night. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Board?
Hello, I'm Paul Jacobs, Reinhard Road, and I'm here to address the proposed meeting calendar for the Board of the upcoming year. The Board has decided to switch from two meetings per month to one meeting per month. This will result in a loss of transparency to the district. The Board meetings are often the most covered. They're available on YouTube. There are detailed meeting agendas and minutes posted to the website, easily available, findable, searchable, et cetera. This is not true of the committee meetings to which a lot of the business is going to be moving. I understand there's efficiencies, but this needs to be balanced with the fact that if the committee meetings are not as made as transparent as these Board meetings, there will be a reduction for the public. A further problem is that there's limited resources in this community to cover this Board for the public. Much of the public relies on the Swathmorean, which has limited time. They often don't cover the committee meetings. They do try to cover the Board meetings. My blog, I'm not going to go to every township and school board meeting. It's just, there's not that much of me. So really, these Board meetings are what gets covered. So by moving things from these Board meetings to the committee meetings, this is a loss of transparency for this district. I also want to say, because we do have limited staff at the Swathmorean, and you know, the Delaware Times almost never covers Wallingford-Swathmore unless it's gone really wrong. So it's really up to the school board to provide oversight of the school district. And this hasn't necessarily been as rigorous in the past couple of years. And I think I just asked the school board members to ask questions. I've really enjoyed Kevin Henry's questions, and I look forward to a lot more questions. Sometimes, learn to say no. Speak up, speak out, dissent, please. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, thank you for taking the time to address us and sharing your perspective. Is there anyone else that wishes to address issues on tonight's agenda, and then there will be time later to address future topics? Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to the nominations for temporary president for this evening. May I have a nomination for temporary president? I, at this point, will nominate Mr. Lawrence Cutus for temporary president for this evening's agenda. And at this time, since he is the only nominee for a temporary president, I will also move for Larry Cutus's election by acclamation for the position of temporary president. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. There are no noes, and I anticipate there are, it wouldn't make sense to have abstentions. So I hereby declare that Lawrence Cutus is elected as temporary Board President. At this time, I will hand the gavel over to our temporary Board President, and he will conduct the meeting from here. Thank you.
Good evening. This is the special time of this meeting, the seating of the newly elected Board members. Review of certificates of election. The Delaware County Board of Elections has certified the election of the following individuals to serve on the Wallingford-Swathmore School District's Board of School Directors. Please stand as I read your name. Dr. David Grandy was duly elected to the office of School Director, Region III, for your term. Mr. Kevin Henry was duly elected to the office of School Director, Region I, for your term. Ms. Rachel Holbert was duly elected to the office of School Director, Region II, for your term. Ms. Wendy Vogt was duly elected to the office of School Director, Region III, two-year term. Mrs. Kelly Walkman was duly elected to the office of School Director, Region I, for your term. Ms. Nanette Witsett was duly elected to the office of School Director, Region I, two-year term. And Ms. Mary Jo Witkowski Smith was duly elected to the office of School Director, Region II, two-year term. We are extremely grateful. And we are extremely grateful that once, super short notice, Judge Stephanie Klein has agreed to come and help with the seating of our newly elected and reelected Board members. Thank you, Judge. Were joining us this evening to seat our newly elected and reelected Board members.
First of all, I apologize for not having my robe on. That is what I'm supposed to be doing when I'm engaging in official activities, and I knew about this 15 minutes ago. And I don't keep my robe at home. I keep it at work where I use it most of the time. So apologies for that, and I'm more than honored to serve as a pinch hitter for my esteemed colleague, Judge Kroll, who soon will be joining me on the Court of Common Pleas. So may we do this en masse, or shall we do this individually? Whichever way I like. Okay, well, let's do it. Let's make it special. Let's do it individually. Okay? So Dr. Grandy, is that you? Repeat after me. I, David Grandy.
I, David Grandy.
Yeah, we don't do that in court anymore. But yes. Hand up. You want to put your hand on the Bible, or would you rather affirm? Okay. I do, David Grandy. I, David Grandy.
I, David Grandy.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Okay. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, you need to sign first, right there. Signature like a true doctor. Mr. Berman, will you take custody of these? Okay, the next person is Kevin Henry. Would you like to swear or affirm? Okay. Raise your right hand. I, Kevin Henry, do solemnly affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. You need to sign right here.
I am not a doctor.
I, not too bad. I'm not giving grades on penmanship. Mr. Berman? Okay, Rachel Holbert? Kyle, why don't you keep the Bible with me? Just in case, would you like to swear or affirm? Okay. I, Rachel Holbert, do solemnly affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Ms. Holbert, will you sign right here? Congratulations. Okay, Wendy Vogt? Would you like a Bible? Oh, okay. Okay, very well. Repeat after me. I, Wendy Vogt, do solemnly affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. And you need to sign your oath right here. Go for there. We did have a lot of vacancies this time, didn't we? Kelly Walkman? Would you like to swear or affirm, Ms. Walkman? Repeat after me. I, Kelly Walkman, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. We don't get to smile here because we're wearing masks. Congratulations. Right there. It's my pleasure. I should have put my robe. Kyle performs all kinds of functions. Yeah, you raise your right hand, left hand on the Bible. Would you repeat after me, Ms. Witsett? I, Nanette Witsett, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations, Ms. Witsett. Would you please sign over here? And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Witkowski Smith? I'm most delighted to see you. Okay. Repeat after me. I, Mary Jo Witkowski Smith, do solemnly affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations. You need to sign right there. I shall not steal your pen. Congratulations to all the new school board members.
Judge Klein, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have to elect the president for the ensuing year. Next order of business is to elect officers for the ensuing year. May I have a nomination for office of president?
I nominate Kelly Walkman.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, great. Dr. Grandy first, and I heard Kevin.
There is no requirement for a second.
There's no.
Yeah, no seconds are needed.
We're just asking for nominations. Okay. Hearing no other nominee other than Ms. Walkman, the nominations are closed. Ms. Walkman is the only candidate nominated. I move for her election by acclamation for office of president. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? I hereby declare that Kelly Walkman is elected Board President.
Okay, well, ready to continue. So at this time, I would like to call for nominations for Vice President. May I have a nomination for the office of Vice President?
I would like to nominate Dr. David Grandy for Vice President.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for office of Vice President? Okay, hearing none, I declare the nominations are closed. As the nominations are closed, and Dr. Grandy is the only candidate nominated, I move for Dr. Grandy's election by acclamation for office of Vice President. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? I hereby declare that Dr. Grandy is elected Vice President. We will continue with nominations for the Assistant Board Secretary. May I have a nomination for the Office of Assistant Board Secretary? I nominate Mary Jo Witkowski Smith. Any other nominations? Right. Hearing none, I declare the nominations are closed. As the nominations are closed, and Ms. Witkowski Smith is the only candidate nominated, I move for Ms. Witkowski Smith's by acclamation for office of Assistant Board Secretary. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Are there any abstentions? I hereby declare that Ms. Witkowski Smith is elected Assistant Board Secretary. Okay, at this time, included on our agenda is a listing of in-district committee representatives and out-of-district representatives. These appointments are made by the President and do not require Board action, although we will review them this evening. And I will begin by reading our in-district representatives. On our Finance Committee, our representatives will be Dr. Grandy, Kevin Henry, Rachel Holbert, and Larry Cutus. For our Policy Committee, our representatives are Ms. Lenz, Ms. Holbert, myself, and Ms. Witkowski Smith. Our Facilities Committee representatives are Dr. Grandy, Kevin Henry, Rachel Holbert, and Larry Cutus. Our Educational Affairs Committee representatives, Kevin Henry, Jen Lenz, Wendy Vogt, Nanette Witsett. Our Workload Committee, David Grandy, Wendy Vogt, and Kelly Walkman. And for our Wellness Advisory Committee, Dave Grandy and Wendy Vogt. I'll continue with our out-of-district appointments. For the Delaware County Community College, Rachel Holbert. For the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Larry Cutus. For the Delaware County School Board Legislative Council, Nanette Witsett. And for our Pennsylvania School Board Association Liaison, Mary Jo Witkowski Smith. Thank you all for your service in these important roles. Our next order of business on our agenda is the approval of the school board meeting schedule for December 2021 and for calendar year 2022, as stipulated. I will note that the proposal from the administration is to move to a monthly legislative meeting. As mentioned by Dr. Grandy in the November 22nd Board Meeting, with the administration, the Board having established an annual calendar of monthly committee meetings, the robust dialogue about items that come before the Board for a vote at our legislative Board meetings is now happening at the monthly committee meetings. And for that reason, the administration has brought forward the proposal before us to move to a monthly legislative meeting. And of note, it is, just to be clear, there are no votes that are taken in those committee meetings. The votes all are brought forth, and that voting happens here in a legislative meeting. So do I have a motion to approve the school board meetings for December 2021 and calendar year 2022?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Grandy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Kevin. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? And are there any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes nine to zero. This brings us to the time for audience recognition for items that are not on tonight's agenda for a vote. Would anyone like to comment tonight on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Thank you. If you can, please just state your name and your address, just the street.
My name is Christine Ruther. I live on East Possum Hollow Road. I actually could have made this comment at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to make it at the end of the meeting when all of you had been sworn in and were seated. And this message is really for all of our school board members. I know how difficult it is to run for office, and I know what it takes to put yourself out there. And you go through that experience, and then you think, oh, I won, isn't that great? Little realizing that the hard work has just started. Now, some of you had the advantage of filling terms by appointment and then getting to run, and some of you didn't. But, and some of you are up here having been reelected, so knowing what it's like to sit on the Board, you decided to do it again. God bless all of you. But really, I just wanted to thank you for your service and to acknowledge the effort that it takes and that, you know, for anybody to run, whether you win or lose, but to win and to come up here, and especially at a time like we're facing now, when there are so many questions. And I have And I, I have to say, I mean, I, I love the school district. I love the diversity of opinion. And I think as challenging as it's been here, I've seen worse on the news and heard about worse in other places. But all of you took this on and, and I'm grateful because I, I feel like our community will be well represented. You know, we're trusting you. Those of us who are older are trusting you with our property values. Those of us who are younger and have kids in the schools are trusting you with a whole lot more. So thank you for your service. Good luck. And I just want you to know that I appreciate you putting yourselves out there and taking on this very difficult job.
Thank you, Ms. Ruther. Other, other comments from the audience? If you would, just again, state your name and address, just the street name for the record, please.
So I'm Bill Foster, Strathhaven, Swarthmore. So with the, this part of the meeting, someone can stand up and make a comment about anything of concern. In the subcommittees, at least the ones that I attended, there's not an open comment period. Comments are to be restricted to what's on the agenda. And so as the school board moves to a once a month meeting, the only time that anyone can bring something new is reduced significantly because it's not happening in your subcommittee meetings unless you change the rules there, which you should. Otherwise, it's down to once a month. So I think that would be an important change to make and it's easy enough. You just do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from the audience? Okay, you may go to the podium. You need to state.
You were hesitant there.
I was. I will acknowledge that the speaker has a relationship with the board president. If you could please state your name and your address, just the street.
All right. Hi, I'm Ava Walkman. I live on Osborne. I'm in elementary school and I go to West Wallingford Elementary School. And yes, it's doing a great job, but I noticed that all of these people that are on the board right now are, have my safety in hand. They make decisions about my safety and my friend's safety, for that matter. They have to make the safest decisions to keep the kids safe. If one kid gets COVID and a lot of kids were exposed, then that creates a whole problem. Because then if all of them get COVID, there's even more expostions. So when we do lift the mask, which I've heard Mr. Savage say a lot, well, hopefully it'd be in spring. What is the plan to continuously keep us safe growing out of COVID to the original learning environment that we had before COVID? I also wanted to bring up the other school, like the building of the middle school that we are in now and the high school. All of these schools, yes, they're in Harrisburg's hands to say, we want them to take these tests. But it's also in your hands to make the important decisions. What happens? Like you said, we are going to change it to once a month. And I agree that it's going to limit our, our ideas. And some of us see each other more than others. But that's not the whole school board. So what are we going to do when someone has an idea, but they can't share it because the meetings are only once a month? That's all I have to say.
Goodbye. Thank you, Ms. Walkman. That's a, that's a, that one's a hard one to come back from. Okay, so prior to adjourning the meeting, I would like to invite any of our school board members who wish to make a comment to do so at this time. Dr. Grande?
Thank you. So I just wanted to, just before we wrap up this evening, just first say that I've had the privilege of, of working with Kelly over the past two years during my time as board president. And I just want to say, Kelly, what an incredible experience that has been to work with you. You're an incredibly skilled and talented leader. And I just want to say how excited I am to hand that gavel over to you. I also want to say, I'm very happy to make this transition to serve as the board vice president during this time period when we do have a lot of new board members among us. I think we have a very incredibly talented team of 10 here. Dr. Marseille, I think your leadership is moving our district forward and allows us to set our sights on even greater achievements. And I know the work you've done and will continue to do over the school year will really help set us up for a successful future. And I just want to say to my eight other elected board members how excited and thankful I am to work with all of you. I think we have a very bright future working together as a team of 10, and I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you for your pen words, Dr. Grande. Would anyone else on the board like to offer any comments? Mr. Henry?
Thanks, Kelly. Sure everyone rolled their eyes when they saw that I was going to speak, but I promise I'll be sure. Thank you for everyone coming here and I just want to congratulate Dr. Grandy on serving his a two-year term, I believe. And I really appreciate that. That's a, at a difficult time. So thank you and congratulations to Kelly for her, her new election. I just wanted to thank everyone who's watching, everyone's here for the privilege. And I think you have to remind yourself, it is a privilege that we get to sit up here. It is hard, I'm sure, especially for you, those of you up here many days, to remind yourself of that. So I want to thank everybody for the privilege of sitting up here. And I will try to remind myself that every day when we're up here. And I'll try to remind my fellow board members as well, we remind each other. That's why we're here. It is a privilege and I thank everybody here for that.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Would anyone else on the board like to offer a comment? Ms. Lenz?
Very briefly, thank you, Kelly. As one of the now considered longstanding board members, although I've only been serving for two years, Mr. Cutis and I, I'm looking forward to working with all the new board members. Some of them have been on for a few months and then there's some brand new. And I look forward to sharing ideas, sharing perspectives. I look forward to disagreeing and I look forward to respecting the disagreements. I think if we're not disagreeing and if we're agreeing all the time, there's probably something wrong there. So I'm looking forward to working out all those kinks in a very professional and mature way. Something I like the most about this job actually is listening. Even tonight, we've only had three speakers, a couple more comments. And I have learned so much and I will go home and, and think about these things for the days to follow. So I don't want the perspective to ever be that just because you're limited to three minutes, that that is the duration in which we think about what you've said. And I think I vouch for all the board members when I say that. But even, even on it tonight, it's, even on a night like tonight where the agenda is fairly simple, you know, there's still things for us to go home and really think about. And I look forward to doing that with everybody that's up here in the upcoming years. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lenz. Would anyone else, any of the other board members like to offer any comments this evening? Dr. Marseille, would you like to offer any comments this evening?
Uh, yes, actually I, I would. The one comment that I was not expecting to share is Cheyenne is in sixth grade. And I'm wondering when she'll come to the board meeting and say some chosen words. I'm holding my breath in terms of that. But saying that jokingly, I, I want to commend whether we agree or disagree, the student voice and how important that is. And the, the courage, also, also the sense of agency, for those who know that word, to be able to take a stance and make a statement, feeling that, that their voice matters and that they can impact change. Which brings me to my next comment. There's going to be a lot of disagreements, but we can agree on one thing. That as good as we are, as far as we've come, the road traveled still needs to be extensive. It still needs to be bumpy. And that there are those that we are leaving behind. The children that we are tasked to support. So that all children have that same level of social capital and agency to be able to articulate their voice in front of so many adults in a position of power to make changes that they feel is necessary. Because at the end of the day, it is all about their future. So I welcome this transition. And I say that because there were two things that resonated with me in terms of one of the speakers would talk about the hard work that is required. Another, Dr. Grande, you mentioned about setting our sights on greater achievements and the team of 10. There's nothing in my life that I have accomplished that I've done by myself without the ability to work as a team. It's all I know how to do to try to be an effective teammate in order to discharge our duties and responsibilities. And I'm looking forward to that. Excited because there is a sense of permanency. I, I first arrived and I, I want to be honest and speak my truth that I was a little skittish with the transitions that were happening upon my arrival. And I'm thinking to myself, is it me? Because I have not had that experience. And obviously, when you have, when you're new to an experience, you're trying to go to the common denominator and trying to find some rationale. And I'm glad it wasn't, so I'm told. But I'm, I'm here and I'm excited because the work that lies ahead and the decisions that are that have to be made. And I've been here for five months. I tried to ensure that I listen as much as possible before moving. Though there are many who want me to move much faster. I can under, and I can understand that. But in order not to repeat the cycle of spinning our wheels, this organization needs to learn how to build systems. And that's why so many times we've been spinning our wheels and building systems, though no one likes to hear that because maybe they've heard. And from previous trauma that individuals have faced with whatever experience they've had here, that I'm hoping that as we move forward, as we keep our eye on the prize, which is the academic and social well-being of our children, supporting the wonderful staff and faculty who have the pleasure of leading that work and the administrators who provide guidance and leadership and oversight over that work that as we move into this next phase, as we close out this, this calendar year, move fresh into January, that we can begin with this board with a strong commitment and you promised that me there won't be no more changes or shifts, right? Thank you very much. That we can start making some tougher decisions and directions in which we want to move forward. And one day then, as jokingly as I said about Cheyenne, that she has the agency and the courage to come and say to the board, still happy to be her father on this, in the chair, to say, um, what are you doing? And we appreciate that and welcome that. So I'm excited and I want to thank those who I've been working with, who are permanent in terms of the shift and those new who just came on board. And there's a lot of learning that has to take place and take your time. But there are some things that we can't take our time with, that we have to start moving with expeditiously in terms of beginning to solidify those. I think we've already started during those things. I just say that because as January comes around, there's going to be some things that we're going to be discussing. I think that's why the urgency and the, the structure of the committees. And I apologize for those who feel that that is a lack of transparency. But I think this district has had challenges because that's the word that keeps coming up. And any of my previous districts where I've worked at, where those structures existed, that never was an issue. But I can understand that it's a different experience and that's an individual's lived experience. And that's not necessarily the way in which this administrative team operates, which is why I'm very sensitive about that word. I have a very different definition of that and that's not who I've been in any district I've been. And I know people Google and search and call. And I encourage them to keep calling and saying, I'm going to wait to that one person who tells me that that's not who this guy is. I challenge you to find that in terms of my commitment, our commitment, and trying to communicate and be a better communicator as all of us are a work in progress, to be better than we were yesterday. That's my commitment and I know that's our commitment collectively as a team moving forward. So thank you for allowing the opportunity for me to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Marseille. I'll just try to make a few short remarks and then we'll close out tonight's meeting. So first, we're doing a lot of thank you. So I want to thank you, Dr. Grande, for your leadership as board president for these past two years. Dave assumed the office of president at the most critical time. And I know the word unprecedented is overused, but truly, these have been unprecedented times to be a school board president. And I'm grateful for the countless hours you spent working with the administration and the board to navigate through a pandemic, leading a month-long search for a new superintendent and much, much more. So thank you very much. I also want to take a moment to thank all of the members of this board for your willingness to serve our district and our community. I'm deeply honored, deeply honored to work with each of you. And I'm so optimistic about the future of this district with your leadership and the leadership of our new superintendent, Dr. Marseille, who in a very short time that he's been with us, we've seen so many positive changes in things that this community has described. And the time that I've been on the board is very important to all of us. So thank you, Dr. Marseille. And so tonight, I want us to be reminded again that this board has been entrusted with guiding and governing the Wallingford Swarthmore School District and upholding our district mission, mission, striving to achieve our vision and demonstrating at all times through our own behavior and our dialogue, our core values and our core beliefs. And this is a most important responsibility. And so I have very high expectations of this team of 10. You'll hear us talk about that team of 10 a lot. And for each of us as individual contributors. And so in closing, I want to ask all of us to please reflect tonight and as you prepare for every meeting and every decision on the magnitude of our individual and our collective responsibility to our students and to our district. And I thank you all. Meeting is adjourned. I think I did that backwards.